Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining. I'll call to order the meeting for the fiscal year 25 budget. And I will hand it right over to City Manager Conard.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, and thank you to the staff that have joined us here. Some of the staff are on Zoom, and the remaining staff are in council chambers. So thank you to everyone present. Finance Director Judy Belanger and I will walk you through the budget preview as we understand the outlook to be for FY '25. And I'll run through the agenda right now. We'll speak to schedule first, and that will be me. Judy will speak to budget forecasting. I will wrap up with a discussion about ARPA at the very end, and then we'll turn it back to the council for discussion, question, answer, period, and for any budget guideline discussion you may like to have, and then we'll go to public comment from there. So the first slide shows that we have used the past two years, the goals that this council set to inform and structure the budget and the programs that are offered. You will notice that these are the existing goals, and a reminder to you all and to the staff and public that there will be a retreat of this council next week to discuss whether these goals need to be refined in any way. So what we look forward to is putting the 2024-25 goals in place of these. But for now, we wanted to remind folks that the budget is built around the goals and objectives set by the council. Here's the schedule. We're at the Budget Work Session, and it's the preview night tonight. At the next regular council meeting, we will have a public hearing on the CIP. There will not be a presentation, but folks that need a recap of that presentation can view the January 17 City Council Work Session on the CIP. The Police Commission and School Boards and Fire Commission will all have their public hearings on budgets upcoming in the first half of February. From there, the council will be asked to adopt the CIP at its March 4 meeting so that it can be incorporated into the budget document that will be available to council and the public at the very end of April. We then will look to have a public hearing on the budget, the first public hearing and first public discussion of it on Monday, May 13. From there, we will look to have a budget review listening session for all departments you see listed here. We have yet to set that, but we understand, in speaking with the mayor, he'd like to have another all-day session, and we'll work with calendars to figure out the best session for that. Sorry, I keep jumping slides. Then from there, we will have a budget review work session with the council on Monday, May 20, and look to adopt the budget on June 3. So from this point on, I will turn things over to Judy, who will run through the highlights and final budget for this current fiscal year and highlights for the coming.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Assistant Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. I'd like to start where we are actually today. So this slide is your FY '24 final budget, which includes the FY '23 budget. And as we know, the FY '23 and the FY '24 were really like catch-up years, climbing out of that COVID era, dealing with historically high inflationary rates, recognizing and dealing with recruitment and retention efforts by restructuring salary schedules for personnel, as well as reinstating our investments in infrastructure and capital needs. The FY '24 budget includes two supplemental appropriations, bringing that total budget to 138.6 million, or 4.68% over fiscal year '23. This budget also included the ramp-up efforts for our information technology by adding two additional full-time equivalents, or two additional staff. But the total addition to the FTEs in FY '24 were 8.16% in the general fund, in that affected legal department, finance, information technology, planning, recreation, school, and the police department.
Can I just clarify? You said FTEs of 8.1?
8.16, yeah. Eight full-time equivalents.
Because you said percent.
Oh, I said percent, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Next slide, please. So as we move forward to the FY '25 budget, we have our usual suspects here of what really impacts our budget from year to year: health insurance, leave-at-term, collective bargaining adjustments, retirement and workers' compensation affects our operating budget, and our operating budget makes up about 20% of the total budget. And then the non-operating is our debt service planning, our capital outlay, rolling stock replacement programs, information technology upgrades, and Rockingham County. So we'll start with the health insurance. This is one area that we really need to wrap our hands around. If you look at the charts on this slide, we have two healthcare plans. We use Health Trust, who manages our health insurance for our city workers on the city side, and then school care for all of the school personnel. Health Trust and school care rates are driven by experiences of each community's members. Health Trust announced that there has been an increase in the overall claims and an increase in severity and volume of high-dollar claims pushing the rates up. The overall rate adjustment for Health Trust for all its members was 16.5%, and rates for individual members range from 6.4% to 25%. Portsmouth's guaranteed maximum rate is 9.3%. And just to put it in perspective, Moltenboro rate increase was 16%, Town of Conway 25%, and Guilford 25%, just to name a few. This is the guaranteed maximum rate. Their final rates will come out sometime in mid-March. They can't go higher than the 9.3%. We're hoping that they come down a little bit. This is the same story with school care at 8%. This is their final rate. It's not a guaranteed max. This is their final rate for fiscal year '25. And how we handle health insurance is that we take a 10-year rolling average, and that's why it shows, these graphs actually show the drastic changes from year to year in these rates. And again, FY '25 experienced the highest rate we've seen in a long time. So we budget, we look at what our actual costs of health insurance could possibly be, because we also look at this number including any and all vacancies. And when we estimate and budget for a vacancy, we budget at a family rate, which is the highest rate. So this number is always constantly changing. We have several vacancies right now in the police department throughout the city, but mostly in the police department, it's the highest vacancy rate. So when we look at this number, and I'm going to change this page so I can see the number, we're estimating like a 3.3% for police, fire, and governmental departments increased because that's the 10-year rolling average. The school department has a higher rate, even though the 10-year rolling average is 5.3%. The school has elected to use 7.3% to accommodate, actually because it's a reserve that we're funding this through, some deficits in the past year. So as this chart shows, that our estimated cost is about 16.8 million. But if we follow this same process, and something we can talk about during more budget work sessions, we're looking at a proposed budget of about $14.6 million. And if all of these vacancies were filled, and as we projected out, that would be a shortfall of almost $2.2 million, which would come from reserve. Again, this changes throughout the year, and any surplus that we have at the end of the year, in any given year, we put that back into the reserve for health insurance for the future. Leave-at-termination is another one of our stabilization reserves. We don't expect to increase the budget for FY '25, but I wanted to show these slides because this is such some good news, actually. So leave-at-term is payout to employees when they terminate employment with the city of Portsmouth. And prior to 1996, all employees could accumulate an unlimited amount of sick time, which they could cash out at termination time. So back in '95-'96, it was negotiated with all the unions that anyone that was hired after that time no longer can cash out their sick time. We use the leave-at-termination for both the annual and the sick time. But as this chart shows, when we closed FY '22, we had about 7.86% full-time equivalent personnel eligible for sick leave payout. And now that that liability has dropped, and the percentage of sick leave payout now is at 5.13%, or in the general fund only, a total of 39 employees as opposed to 56 in the prior year. So we're at 5.3%. The next slide shows the history, and it goes back to 2000 when we really implemented this. And as you can see, this graph shows that, you know, over 2000 to 2002, this liability was increasing. But as we started to employ new employees, and as people were leaving employment with the city, you can see how that liability and how this policy has really helped in the total liability of the city. We're down to a little over $4 million. Now, we have 16 collective bargaining agreements. The good news is, is all of these contracts have been ratified through FY '25. The police department has three contracts through FY '27 that will expire, and fire is FY '26 and so forth. So you can see that we will not need to fund any collective bargaining contingency in the FY '25 budget. However, our collective bargaining agreements are tied to a cost-of-living adjustment, and it's the 10-year rolling average of the November to November Boston-Cambridge-Newton CPI. So in this chart on the left shows the last 10 years, what the CPI came in at. In FY '24, that CPI was 7%. In FY '25, it dropped to 2.39%. So the 10-year rolling average is 2.69, which is tied to the majority of the collective bargaining agreements. There was some stipulations in some of the more recent contracts. You see on the right, the fire department, the officers and the firefighters will have an increase of 2%, and then 2.69% for the administration. And school ranges from 2.69% to 3.69% depending on their union. And just a note here, that social security for the calendar year '24 is at 3.2%. Now, the New Hampshire retirement system, many years ago, prior to fiscal year '10, the state would contribute 35% of the rate for the retirement for teachers and police and fire personnel. In FY '10, they reduced that obligation to 30%, and FY '11, they reduced it to 25. And after FY '12, there was no contribution. So the city has been picking up the full rate over the last several years, and a total of, the last 15 years is a total of about $29 million in tax pay is paid towards the retirement system. But the good news for FY '25 is that the rates, this is the second year of their biennial budget, and the rates will not change for fiscal year '25. The total budget for general fund is about 11.8 million, but this number will be adjusted according to the COLAR adjustments or any step increases that are in fiscal year '25. Workers' Comp had announced to us that their overall increase is 8%. That's citywide. So that would include not only the general fund, but in your parking, water, sewer, stormwater, et cetera. This 8% increase is $84,000, but we haven't allocated it and working on doing the allocation to where those funds are going to fall. So now debt service, and we talked a lot about debt service when we were at the work session for the capital improvement plan. And the city has a policy to manage the debt going forward, is to use no more than 10% of the annual appropriation towards net debt service payments to keep the debt manageable. And what is net debt? Net debt is any revenue that comes in. And this year, we have a building aid for the middle school of $740,974. And then we use reserve typically. We have a debt service reserve currently at about $8.3 million, and typically, we use about $1.5, $1.7 million annually to help offset not only the taxes associated with the debt service, but to bring that net debt service down. Since the work session that we had January, what is it, January 17? Since then, this chart has slightly changed. If you look at fiscal year '25, during the work session, it was over 9%. It was like 9.3%. But since then, we worked with Peter Rice, Deputy Public Works Director, I'm sorry, the Director of Public Works, sorry, the City Manager and the finance team. We worked together, and we were able to identify $15 million in authorized but unissued bond authorizations that we will not need to issue this June. Now, when I say that, it's important to note, this action does not delay or reduce any of the projects or cut any of these projects. It's just that we do not need that funding by June of this year, so it will not affect FY '25. We will issue those bonds in June of '25. So it will affect, we just kind of moved it out, so it will slightly affect the future years. Because of this, we were able to reduce the debt service amount by $1.5 million for fiscal year '25. Now, the next slide, as a request of Councilor Cook, to look more out about 10 years. Now, the current CIP is a six-year plan, so we do a six-year plan every year, which would bring in the next fiscal year. When we prepare this forecast, there are certain assumptions that are made. One, we take a five-year historic look back at budget increases without debt service. And then we look at the ever-changing interest rates, right? So we can't, we don't have a crystal ball of what interest rates are going to be when we issue bonds. So we look at what the market is doing currently, and we try to project out what it's going to do in the future. And then we account for your debt service reserves. Again, that's your about $1.5 million a year. Now, at the current rate that we're at with reserves at $8.2 million, that debt service reserve gets exhausted by fiscal year '30. So if you take, if you see fiscal year '30 spiking over that 10% line there. If you draw a line like down beyond fiscal year '30, you're going to see that the bars go below the 10%. But you have to keep in mind that we don't have a CIP, so there's no new projects involved there. And so each year, as we continue with the CIP process, this will change, but this kind of gives a little bit of an overview over the 10 years.
Before we get off this slide, I would like to remind folks that even when the out-years look daunting and show over 10%, it's always something that gets managed as we get into, as we move along and get into that fiscal year. And at no time has the city gone over the 10%. We manage that and move projects accordingly to keep under that 10%. We have historically done that.
Correct, that's correct. And also, any surplus in any fiscal year, we try to replenish that reserve too. So, you know, we're hoping that we can keep that trending forward, and after FY '30, that there'll still be reserved to be able to use during the budget process. So capital outlay, capital outlay is your pay-as-you-go projects. They're paid from cash from the general fund, and the policy is to budget no more than 2% from the prior year's appropriation for capital outlay. In the last few years, in FY '23 and FY '24, we were able to use ARPA funding, about $860,000 from ARPA funds, and that's why FY '23 and '24 remained a little low. For the projects that are identified in the capital improvement plans for FY '25 is about 1.8%, just under 1.8% of the appropriations. And if you look at fiscal year '16, you know the numbers on, it was at the same percentage, 1.79 of 1.8%. The next chart identifies those capital outlay projects that are identified in that $2,488. Now, we have some work to do. We're examining those projects now, and, you know, we may be able to move projects, but we're working on that now, working with Peter Rice, City Manager and Finance as well. Rolling Stock Program is intended to provide an overall schedule of replacements of our aging vehicles and equipment. This also helps reduce costs and maintenance, and older vehicles are more costly to maintain. And these requests come from the department, and currently, right now, what is requested is a little over $1.1 million, or an increase of $245,000, or 28%. Again, in FY '23, we were able to use $382,600 from ARPA funds. IT upgrades and replacement, again, these are identified in the capital improvement plan, increase of $81,000 at this point, or just under 7% increase from the prior year. And again, in FY '23, we used $250,000 from ARPA, and in FY '24, we used $304,000 from ARPA funds. Rockingham County Tax. So we have an obligation to Rockingham County, we're one of 37 communities that make up the Rockingham County, and we are mandated, obviously, to pay this tax, and it is calculated with two components. One, it's what the county, how they adopt their budget, what their budget comes in at, and then also, what proportion are we for all the 37 communities? This is based off the equalized value, which is set by the Department of Revenue, and it goes by the previous year. So for fiscal year '25, the state will provide us with the equalized value for fiscal year '24. It's really hard to project right now. We don't know what the county budget's going to be, and we don't know what our proportion of the 37 communities are yet. So this chart here shows the comparison of population and the percentage of the proportion that Portsmouth is at. We are the fourth largest population-wise, but we pay the higher percentage proportion of the county tax. The next slide is the actual, the green bars are what we actually paid. In fiscal year '24, we paid a little over $5.5 million to the county. We budgeted $5,730,000 last year, so there is a surplus in the expenditures. And we feel that we just, at this point, no increase in the budget here. We do not, again, know what our proportion's going to be, but if you look at the chart from fiscal year '21 to '25, you can see, and it's kind of hard to read up there on the screen, but our proportion used to be about 11.4%, and it's dropped. We're at 10.8%, and for fiscal year '25, that could change. So the next slide just kind of recaps what we talked about for the non-operating, putting it in more perspective, for the debt service, the county tax, rolling stock, IT replacement, and capital outlay.
I think before we advance the slides, we are cognizant of the fact that the percentage change in both rolling stock and capital outlay is really large, and we feel like there are ways to manage that that we would discuss with council.
And in this title, this slide really should be entitled "Very Preliminary." This is really an overview of the non-operating, what we discussed, and looking at the operating budget. So the operating budget, obviously, is your salaries, stipends, overtime, retirement, health insurance, leave-at-termination, all the benefits associated with that. In the operating side of the budget, about 82% of the total operating side is made up of salaries and benefits. These are basic assumptions. Departments are still working on their budgets. I don't have final numbers, but we're working closely together to kind of pull them together. So, you know, by looking at this, I'm expecting we're going to be about 6%, but we're going to be working again and hopefully come in lower than that. Non-operating overall is 5.18 right now, for a total of 5.7%.
Thanks, Judy. The last slide, we The last slide we have before we open it up is relative to the American Rescue Plan Act funds, or ARPA. To remind folks, we received $12.88 million and to date have appropriated 80% or $10.3 million of that amount. The balance left to appropriate is 2.58 million, or 20%. And we need to keep in mind that this money has to be obligated with contracts in hand and ready to execute no later than the end of this calendar year 2024, with all funds to be spent by the end of calendar year 2026. So we are sensitive to that and know that we've got the clock ticking on that one. So of the remaining balance, $395,280 must be spent on what we call the restricted aspects related to COVID, so public health and negative economic impacts, as well as investment in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The remaining 2.18 comes under the revenue loss category. You'll recall that we were able to claim $10 million of that $12.88 million toward revenue loss. And they can be used in the way you see here by way of government services, which can be in the ways we have spent it, which is capital outlay or pay-as-you-go, building infrastructure, modernization of information technology and cybersecurity, and things related to public safety. So with that, we have some, we have thoughts in mind about how to spend that. Obviously, we would look to the direction of the council. But one thing that staff has given serious thought to and is looking to identify a tighter cost estimate would be shoring up one of the municipal buildings to serve as an emergency shelter. We have some very, I'll say makeshift opportunities for that now by way of the high school. But there are opportunities to spend money on buildings we already own that would augment them and make them safe for, Kim would tell me, at least 1% of the population. But she'd like to serve much more than that. So that's something we've talked about. Obviously, we would like to continue that conversation with the council. With that, we will pause here and happy to take any questions. And we have lots of staff here who can help us.
Thank you, City Manager and Finance Director, Councilor Blalock.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I was just curious if the, that extra $2 million, $2.5 million that we have to appropriate from the ARPA was included in the FY25 budget projections on the slide before, or no?
We have not programmed any ARPA toward things we may have previously recommended, things like capital outlay, rolling stock, IT upgrades. We are hesitant to do that because it's probably prudent to stop relying on it for those types of needs. And because we're concerned, we may not be able to obligate them and meet the deadline of, necessarily meet the deadline of calendar year end '24.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, I have a question. For the health insurance, for the school, we're looking at around 8%. Is there a max as is with the other health insurance plan? Or is there no max that we are capped at?
They, my understanding is they set their final rate, and that's 8%. And I think Ethan has a guess. Oh, where is he? Oh, he's waving.
They set it.
Yes.
They don't do a guaranteed maximum, or they don't do a projection of that max. They just give the rate in the poll.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Tabor?
Yes, what is our, what's happening with our headcount in this estimated budget? Is this assuming flat? Is this assuming additional FTEs?
It's essentially flat. The message to staff was this needs to be flat. I can share with you the one item that the fire and the information technology staff have darkened our doorstep on, which is a shared IT position exclusively to understand the needs of the fire department. So I think the safe answer to your question is there is a net add of one. It would be a fire IT person to sit within the IT row.
Right. I think just, sorry for the scratchy throat. You know, we went up 27 across all funds. Two years ago, we went up eight last budget. So after those increases, I would hope to see us flat.
A question for the City Manager. You said there are staff recommendations for ARPA. As we go through the budget process, is there a timeline when those would be presented to the council for consideration?
It could be its own work session. I think it deserves its own time. And we haven't projected out how best to do that. Maybe we can work with the council on a specific date to noodle out all the options for that.
Thank you. Any other council questions? Councilor Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question on the net debt service 10-year projection. I know I had asked for this at the last session. Do we have any dollar figures on how much we would have to cut out of the CIP budget in fiscal year, starting in fiscal year, it looks to me like fiscal year '27, to make sure we don't go over debt service? And then going out, how much more would we have to cut by fiscal year '29? So we don't hit it in fiscal year '30?
We do have that number. We just don't have it with us.
I believe it's close to like a $15 million amount.
But it isn't ever changing. You know, the CIP changes throughout the year. It's a plan, and so, but yes, it's good to look at.
Last year's budget, we budgeted 5% for future interest. This year, we're down for a 20-year bond. This year, we're doing a 4.5. No, 4.25. Yeah, we dropped it down to 4.25. So, and that could come down too. So once the budget comes out, we will review all the projects again. And we will review the interest rate again, and things will change. And we could actually review our future projects also. We've been looking at that too.
As a follow-on, can we get, I know that this is a lot to ask because currently, this isn't broken down by project. Is there any chart we have that'll show just how much a project costs us per year out for the life of the project? And I'm asking for that for, we have several projects in the CIP that are coming forward over the next five years that we have to be thinking about what the projections are out for several years.
I'm not sure.
I think it's the projected debt schedules.
Yeah, it's in the schedule. If in the CIP, it indicates that we're going to bond for it. If you go to the debt schedule, after all the issued stuff, we have all the future debt. Each individual one of those, you could see how much each project will be. Every one of them is individually put into the debt schedule.
I guess what I'm asking for is that in comparison to the debt limit by year, so that we see how much of this, like, say, the debt limit in fiscal year '30, which projects are taking up kind of what percentage of that? I think that's what I'm looking at. Because I can look at the debt service numbers, but unless I know, you know, what percentage of the debt service is this by year? Because the debt service increase, you know, our percentages increase every year because the budget grows up. So it's impossible to tell just from the chart, is what I would say, without knowing what that overall number is. Is there a way to do that?
I'm not quite following.
Well, I think there's a way in terms of a point in time. But the minute next year's CIP is changed in any way, that will change the out years too. So as a snapshot, we could look at it if I'm, if I think I'm understanding your question correctly.
Yes. So if we decide on a project this year, or then we know what the debt service on that project looks like for X number of years. So in one year, it's only 4% of the CIP budget. But that, you know, that should decline over time because the CIP budget goes up. But I'm trying to figure out how much it costs us per year.
It also depends on from the date we authorize it and you approve it to the date the bonds are issued. Like in the case of this year, there will be some projects totaling $15 million that will not incur debt in '25 that are pushed to '26. So that, again, will cause a ripple. So it ends up being sort of a snapshot type answer to a question.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I know Councilor Bagley had his hand up on Zoom.
Councilor Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of questions. I guess, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into the budget. But I am a little concerned with the number, the percentage of the increase coupled with the revaluation. We don't have that data yet. But based on what's happened in other towns, it could be that the tax burden gets shifted from commercial to residential if trends hold true. But we won't know that until later this year. Some of the items that pop up in addition to CIP that show significant interest increases are the transfer to the indoor pool is increasing 33%. And the transfer to community campus is increasing about 32%. Could you just bound on those a little bit?
Oh, that, I think you're looking at the last year. If you're looking at the slide, FY24, final slide, because I didn't present any estimates for FY25.
And in FY24.
FY23, FY24 is last year changes.
Right.
Year, yep.
Yeah.
That would be the year we took control back of the pool and started to fully understand the costs associated with operating and maintaining the community campus.
Okay, so we don't expect to see increases in either of those two items this year?
I would like to say not to that extent.
Okay, and then for the proposed capital improvement plan, this isn't really the time to talk about places we might want to consider cost savings?
We can, if you would like to.
That, well, we have another work session. I'm sorry, I'm probably not at the top of my game. But there are some, and I would want some feedback from the city staff. You know, it would be nice if we could fund everything, but I don't know that that's the right move. So I'd like to learn, you know, what areas we think might be either defrayed with ARPA funds or pushed off into an out year.
Okay.
And I don't need that answer tonight. But that's kind of my thinking, is that we need to consider reducing the spending a little bit.
Thank you, Councilor Bagley. So it seems like we will try to get that ARPA work session on the calendar.
In the near term, yep.
In the very near future. Okay, before we open it up for public comment, is there any other questions for now from the council? Of course, we'll have a couple more cracks at this as we go through the work sessions with the fire, the school, the police, in general, budget. Okay, I will open it up for public comment. Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Petra Huda, 280 South Street. I have questions. Was the council guidance given at a meeting, and I missed it? That was the first question. Generally, the council gives guidance to the staff on either a dollar or a percentage increase for the budget. I have not seen that at any of your meetings. And I was just wondering when that was going to occur in this process. Next question, will this packet be available to the public? Some of us can't see the screen even if we sit on top of it. So it would be great to have the packet published. Next question, was the FY23 surplus of $7.2 million taken into account when you're putting this budget together? As this was excess dollars that went into the general fund, and it accounted for 5.48% of the previous year's budget. So my question is, will you be adding this together? Or will you be taking the budget down by this amount because it's already in there? Last statement or question that I'd like to answer, maybe for Councilor Cook. I think what you're looking for is a construction in progress schedule, which will tell you what your, where your projects are and what the requirements are for the money in the next year and years out. If staff, staff should have one of those if they don't have it in Public Works. Anyway, it'd be great if you could answer some of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Petra.
Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to take a stab at those questions, just in the interest of time and expediency.
Absolutely.
As mentioned at the outset of the presentation, we're looking for the council guidance. It has not been issued yet. The discussion could start here, and I anticipate it might get formalized at the February 5 council meeting because the council really can't take votes here. The packet is now, thanks to Monty, on our city website, so it's available for viewing. And I know we've spoken to how previous year's surpluses get included and carried through to fund balance and to fund other reserves. So we'll continue to touch on that as we move forward with the budget conversation.
Thank you. Okay. Nobody on Zoom with their hand up? Okay, well, thank you guys all so much for being here. Thank you to staff. Thank you for those who tuned in. Again, a schedule of the budget presentations, proposed budget and work sessions are available online. And that's all. Good night, Portsmouth.